Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome. We have two meetings tonight. The first is the rescheduled city council meeting. Today is Monday, August 5th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi? Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from previous meetings, including June 6th, 2024, city council minutes; July 1st, 2024, Committee of the Whole; July 1st, 2024, Committee of the Whole Public Hearing Minutes; and July 8th, City Council Minutes. And you were emailed this afternoon a corrected copy of the June 24th minutes. And the correction, as I understand it, is on page eight, under the item C. And it's the first motion, which was to amend the annual budget. And it should read, "Motion to amend the annual budget to remove the $45,000 funding for the community engagement team's building lease by Councilmember Wilken, seconded by Councilmember Colacetti." And I believe that's the only correction made? Okay. So is there a motion to approve these minutes with the correction that's stated?
So moved.
There, second.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Any further discussion?
Grace? I just had a clarification. I thought I heard June 6th in there. I don't know if I misheard or that was meaning to be 6/24.
I meant to say June 24th, 2024.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
Yeah, we should have already approved the June 6th minutes.
Okay, I just didn't know if that's, if I heard wrong or...
Or 2024.
Yep, 6/24 turned into June 6th. Thanks.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda. We'll go on to presentations and public input. Seeing none, we'll move on to council input and communications. I will announce two things. One is that on Wednesday, August 7th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., there's going to be a community resource walk in the Dr. Williams Elementary Neighborhood. And people can, volunteers will visit families in the neighborhood and deliver information about back-to-school night and other important resources for starting school. And I believe they're meeting at Dr. Williams School. And then again, a reminder that the Census Bureau is still taking applications for field representatives to work in the 2020 special census that will be conducted here in Urbana. The pay starts at 1883 an hour and goes up. And applications can be made if you go to the city's website at urbanaillinois.us. There's an icon on the homepage. You click on, and that'll take you to the federal application. Mary Alice.
I just had a question. Can people who are international work as long as they have permission to work?
They must be a U.S. citizen.
Okay, thank you.
And they must be 18 years of age. And they must be able to pass a background check. And these are all federal government rules. Chris?
Thank you. I just came back from a meeting at Garden Hills Elementary School in Champaign. It was a meeting in reaction, or continued reaction, to the gun violence in our community. I talked with Tracy Parsons, who asked me to ask you that, to let you know that you, council members and command staff of the police department are welcome to come to these meetings. There's going to be more community meetings about gun violence. And Tracy Parsons, the Community Outreach Director over at City of Champaign, as well as the emcee for the Community Coalition, just wanted to let you know, all of you, Allen Council, that you're welcome to come as well. And I'll let you know by email when the next meetings are.
Yes, any other announcements? Okay. We'll move on to reports of standing committee. Mary Alice Wu.
All right, there's nothing on the consent agenda. So on the regular agenda, I move on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, Resolution Number 2024-07054, Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium sub-recipient agreement designating, designating Champaign County Regional Planning Commission as a sub-recipient of the home program funds for tenant-based rental assistance for fiscal year 2025.
There, second. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
No, okay. That motion passes. Thank you.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move approval of Resolution Number 2024-07055R, Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium sub-recipient agreement designating Courage Connection as a sub-recipient of home program funds for tenant-based rental assistance for fiscal year 2025.
There, second.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Mary Alice. Reports of special committees, there are none tonight. And we'll move on to reports of officers. And this will be a staff report on the environmental grant program. And we have Braden Belcher from the Grants Manager of the City of Urbana.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'll be providing an overview of a proposed grant program for environmental projects and activities in the city of Urbana. So just first, to provide a little bit of background and context for this. So this came out of the 2024 budget, when $100,000 in general funds was set aside for environmental projects, project partnerships, and memorandums of understandings with community partners. Subsequently, it was put in the Mayor Council Strategic Goal 3.3C, create a grant program for community environmental projects. So that was for the most recent Mayor Council Strategic Goals for 2024 and 2025. So this program has been developed in response to both of those items. So I'll, again, I'll start with a little bit of an overview of what we are proposing as staff for this program. And then at the end, I'll be seeking some additional guidance and input from you all about what the program should look like before we, before we launch it. So in developing this grant program, staff utilized the following four documents that you see there on your screen to really guide this, this, developing this program. So the city doesn't have necessarily like a unified climate action policy. So instead, we looked at the documents that the city does have, including the Resolution, the Urbana Climate Inheritance Resolution from 2018, the Proclamation Affirming a Local Partnership for Joint Climate Resilience Efforts, also from 2018, Resolution 202001, a resolution establishing social equity and justice in Urbana Sustainability Framework from 2020, the 2023 Urbana Arbor Day Mayoral Proclamation, and then again, the 2024 Mayor Council Strategic Goals for Sustainability. So the program that we're presenting to tonight, hopefully, is responsive to the goals and the priorities that were set in these documents. But again, like I said, we'll be seeking some additional input or feedback from, from all of you on what this program can look like. So first, with the, the name of the program, Sustaining Urbana Neighborhoods, or SUN Program. We thought that that was a title that encapsulates what we're hoping to do with this, with this program, really impacting Urbana neighborhoods with sustainability and environmental projects. So this proposed grant program will provide funding to community-based activities that will support climate resiliency and sustainability goals that we, that we just mentioned. So we wanted to target a few kind of key areas. So when we're accepting applications and soliciting applications, we wanted to give potential applicants and organizations that might want to apply a framework for what kinds of things we're looking for. So we identified three kind of broad theme areas. Again, these were taken from those, those documents that I mentioned earlier in, you know, trying to be responsive to some of the goals and priorities that have already been set by council. So the first is promoting healthy, sustainable community living. The second is fostering creativity and collaboration to enhance climate resiliency. And then the third is including young people in the process of creating climate-related policies and actions. And again, these are broad, but we wanted to be inclusive and see what types of projects or programs are out there that could use funding. We didn't want it necessarily to be restrictive. But again, we did want to provide a framework for, you know, what kind of broad themes were we looking to fund through this grant program? So as I mentioned, $100,000 was set aside in the 2024 budget in general funds to support this overall grant program. The proposed idea is to target kind of individual awards around $10,000 per applicant. Obviously, larger projects could be considered and accepted on a case-by-case basis. We don't really have preconceived ideas about what types of applicants we'll get, which is exciting. So we want it to be relatively open-ended. So again, we had that target of about $10,000 per project as a goal for what we're hoping to fund. We also established a preference for projects or programs that are located in the city's community development target areas, which we do explain in the application packet. And we will provide a map as well. So if any applicant is unsure about what that means, they could find that information there. So we are targeting this grant program toward primarily nonprofit organizations, organizations that have 501(c)(3) status. But again, we want it to be inclusive. So we are opening it up as well to individuals or community groups, neighborhood groups, whatever that might look like, with the caveat that they have a nonprofit organization sponsoring them. Again, just for accountability. And it makes kind of the financial side of managing the grant a little bit easier to have a nonprofit that has some of that capability built in already. We also felt like that showed, that showed some buy-in from the community. If you're able, if you're an individual applying for the grant, you could show that there's an organization behind you willing to help and willing to buy into the program. The proposed application process. So the first thing I'll say is that there is a draft application packet that was included in your packet tonight. You know, pending kind of the feedback that we get tonight, we would be ready to launch this, you know, as soon as possible. A proposed timeline here would be September 1st through November 1st for the application period. Again, there's that standardized form. And then there's also a standardized scoring rubric, which is also included in your packet. And that's just to ensure that every applicant, every application is scored fairly and by the same criteria. So we realized that, you know, September, October, November is not necessarily growing season. So we would give applicants about, we would give applicants a year to fully expend their, their funding on their program. So we, we set kind of a target end date of September 2025 for projects to be completed. So kind of continuing on with what we're proposing for the application process, we would convene a review committee that would review applications, use the scoring tool to kind of rank the applications, and then bring final funding recommendations to council. And again, as I mentioned, we would ask that projects be completed by September 30th, 2025. The intention was that this process mirror as closely as possible our existing youth services grant program process, which we think works pretty well and, and makes it easy for agencies or people who are interested in applying for funding to receive, to, to go through the process and potentially receive funding. So as I said, there's a couple items that we're gonna, you know, ask for some feedback on. But again, you know, we'll take any feedback that you have. Any changes you might want to see, we'll, we'll certainly take all of that into consideration. But just specifically, I would start with these four that came up during the process. So the first was, are there any funding or programmatic priorities that are not addressed in this proposal that council would like to see included? Again, we want to be specific enough, but not, not restrictive, so that agencies or, or, you know, organizations that want to apply have some framework, but aren't necessarily constrained in what they can apply for. So any other thoughts or input on those priorities would be, would be helpful. Again, as I mentioned, we staff are recommending that target goal of about $10,000 per grant. If council has feelings about increasing, decreasing that, we, you know, we, we'd certainly take that under advisement as well. Again, we were, I suggested sort of the September 1st through November 1st application period that would provide two months for applicants to submit their materials. We could also do a 30-day application period. That's an option as well. That could help expedite the grant awards. But again, we would want to be just aware that that could potentially put time constraints on agencies in submitting their application. So we would be open to some feedback on that as well. And then just the review process. Again, as with our youth services grant program, we convene a small committee, typically around five people, made up of staff, council member, council members as well, to kind of review and, and make recommendations. That's a possibility here, as I mentioned. We could also have staff review and score and make those final recommendations, which again, could expedite the process. But that, again, could be up to all of you to discuss further. So like I said, those are sort of the four items that, that we wanted some feedback on. But any other aspect of the program, we would be happy to take, to take that, that input as well. And like I said, hopefully, get this launched as soon as possible.
Well, let's take these one at a time. And any feedback on the first topic? Grace?
Braden, thank you so much. I love that this has come together and appreciate your work on it. I had a question on this one and the first eligibility, about does the proposal address at least one city environmental priority? And I'm wondering if we have those defined or listed out? I guess if that's what you're kind of asking here? Do we have an existing list?
So that is kind of what we're asking. What we had identified were those sort of three broad themed areas, which again, we realize are broad. So the idea was if you can kind of, in your application narrative, kind of tie your program to furthering one of these sort of broad theme areas, that's, we would consider that, we would consider that as, you know, addressing one of those.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that makes sense. I think those, those three areas kind of like overlapping Venn diagrammy, right? Like not just necessarily all one. I think that makes sense. And like you said, each project will be unique. And we might get some ideas that we hadn't thought of before. So I think it makes sense to keep it kind of open. And then through that review process, that might help narrow down more what we're thinking.
Any other thoughts? Chris?
Yeah, I, this is a question as much for Grace as it is you, Braden, which is, I thought this was about vegetation, growing fruit trees and berry bushes. And it's okay that it's gotten broad. It's broadened into a bigger thing. I'm just asking, wasn't it the original intent to be about vegetation and gardening, essentially?
Grace?
I would speak to my intent in proposing this with the budget and all was, that was one thing that was mentioned as a possibility. And I think that something like that still fits in here, for sure. But I think that point about, yeah, having it broad, because we might get other stuff. There might be rain garden things or pond management or some other thing, solar panels on bus stations or something else that maybe isn't directly vegetation-related, but also kind of climate, environmental, sustainability, resilient community kind of focused. So I think, great question. I think that still fits in. But we can also be open to some other unique things that may come along, is the way that I see it.
Mary Alice.
Braden, would you mind scrolling up to the three targeted items? I have kind of two thoughts on the third one. So including young people in the process of creating climate-related policies and actions. Can you expand a little bit on related policies and actions? What you envision that might incorporate?
So that was taken from the city's climate inheritance policy, I'm sorry, resolution. And really, what I envisioned that as would be like educational programming, something whether in, you know, an after-school program, weekend, you know, educational program that focuses on, you know, climate education, things like that. But the language about young people, again, to me, brought to mind an educational program of some sort that could touch on, on these topics.
I don't know if it belongs here, but I'm, I'm actually thinking of taking young people out and talking about diversity of different groups. Different groups could be different age groups. It could be different race and ethnicity groups. But bringing together different groups in the process of creating climate actions or strategies. So that's a thought that I had about that.
Grace?
I think that makes sense. I do think the policies is maybe a little out of place. Understand that was taken from some other language. But I think that also sounds fine with including diverse groups in policy, or no, in climate-related actions and strategies, you say? Okay, thanks.
So you'd replace policies with strategies? Suggestion, weren't you?
Yeah, and young people with diverse groups.
Okay. Anything related to priorities? Jaya?
Yeah, I wonder about maybe having diverse groups and young people? Because I do think that there's something to be said if we're looking at climate and we're thinking about the long term. Who is it going to impact? It's, it's young folks, right? And so I, I would assume that probably that was some of the initial intent is recognizing that we have an obligation to the people who are going to be here after us and that they should be part of those conversations. So, you know, kind of what Braden was describing is it could be an opportunity, you know, for the park district or after-school program or something like that to actually give youth an opportunity to be part of the solution. And I think that's pretty cool. So I just would maybe offer an amendment to the amendment to keep the youth, keep the youths in there.
Put the young people back in and add diverse groups of people. Shonda?
Maybe the word multi-generational or something like that. That way, it's target everyone, essentially. Or at least you get the, get to the diversity of ages part.
Okay, we've got some words to work with. Any thoughts on the award amounts? Hands up, okay. Shonda?
You had mentioned, sort of making it like the youth services grant with a targeted award of $10,000 pro project. So if a project was a little more or a little less, like how would, I guess, how would the review of projects that maybe cost a little more go? Or are you prioritizing those projects that are $10,000 or less?
So we would, again, on a case-by-case basis, you know, we would certainly consider if there's a larger, a larger project. And in the, in the scoring criteria, we ask about budget. You know, are costs reasonable? Again, to kind of get to, you know, if they're asking for significantly more, you know, if it's for a project that seems like it makes sense and it's well-thought-out, that would certainly be something that, that we could consider. I have found in the past, it's helpful to provide a target amount so that the applicants can have a frame for like what they're applying for and they can structure their budget. Again, it's just kind of a helpful framework for, for them to kind of think through. So we wanted to give some target. Again, while also saying it can be flexible. If you have something, you know, you can do for 15, 20,000. You know, again, we have to review the budget, make sure everything looks reasonable and that it can be done within the timeframe. But that would certainly be considered.
I think it makes sense to, to give them a number. That, that absolutely makes sense. Another question I had about the budget was, will there be things that the grant will not pay for? And should that be specified in the, in the application?
We have not, we did not include that in the draft application packet. We could.
I think there, if, if there are things that the grant will not pay for, it should be listed.
Yeah, I think really, I mean, the only thing I could think of would be like, it couldn't pay for like political campaign activities, which I think there is related to that effect in the, in the overview packet. But again, we were keeping it open-ended. You know, this, when we have like our, our Community Development Block Grant Public Services, you know, there's a lot of federal regulations about specific things that cannot be, cannot be, funding cannot be used for. This is general fund, so it's slightly different. Those, not all of those regulations apply necessarily. So we were a little bit more open-ended on that.
Okay, okay, makes sense. Thanks.
Any other thoughts on the target amount? Application period? Oh, lots of hands. Chris, Mary Alice?
Well, A, I, I would vote for the 60-day. I think it would be completely inappropriate for me to throw out names of organizations now. But Braden, should I be giving them your email address?
Yes. And I would also just add that in the lead-up to launching the, the program, we will do the standard outreach and making sure it's, you know, visible in the community and do a press release so that anyone who, you know, might be interested would, wouldn't be aware of it. But yes, certainly, if there, if there's an organization or someone that you know, you could certainly let them know about the program and give them my contact information. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice?
I, I, I think that we should go with the 60-day application period. It's a brand-new program. It's going to take a little bit of time to kind of get the word out. People are going to be a little confused in terms of what they can and cannot do with this grant. So I, I think it's appropriate to do a 60-day application rather than 30.
Up, okay. And review of applications, thoughts? Mary Alice?
So I'm, I'm looking at this with the lens of somebody who's been on the other grant committee and thinking about the rubrics that we've used in the past. So if I look at item number two and item number eight, item number two is project will have a community-wide impact. a community-wide impact, and item number eight, this project is located in a community development target area. I see that as being a little contradicting, so to speak, because one where, on one way, you can gain some points if it's community-wide, but you can actually gain the maximum points if it's in the development area, right? So I don't exactly have a suggestion on how to change it, other than thinking about, there are some scoring that people do with applicants, you know, based on veteran status or what have you. So maybe taking out eight and giving bonus points, so to speak. That's just one idea that I have, but I'm certainly open to other ideas. The other one, which is number four, applicant has obtained necessary approvals. That worries me a little bit, because I think it cuts some people out, and so I'm trying to think is, would it be more realistic to ensure that people understand the necessary city requirements and the length of time it will take them to do that? So those are some of my thoughts on the rubric.
I could, I just couldn't maybe help clarify. So we were aware of that issue, because maybe your project doesn't require permits. So we added a note that if no permits or approvals are required, then they just have to get five points for that one specifically. So we were trying to kind of balance that out, but I understand that point. And we might maybe need to wordsmith eight and two, because what we were trying to get at was, yes, we do want to prioritize projects in, you know, low-income Urbana neighborhoods, but what we meant by community-wide impact was thinking of a program or a project that like benefits the entire neighborhood, rather than, you know, a business that just wants to, or, you know, someone that just wants to put solar panels on their house, which totally would be eligible. But again, trying to get at something that benefits just like one organization versus like something that's for the whole neighborhood. So that's what we were trying to get at, but I can maybe...
Could be community or neighborhood-wide impact, right? Just throwing the word neighborhood.
Shonda?
I like the idea of the applications being reviewed by a committee versus just by staff, and maybe those on that committee may have some sort of knowledge or, I don't know, understanding of what a good environmental project should have in order to be successful, or something like that. But I think definitely a committee.
Would you like a council member to serve on the application review committee?
Yes, so our intention was to have, to ask max two members of council, and then we would also have a member, in addition to staff, a member of the sustainability advisory committee to serve as well.
Grace?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with committee review, and I'd definitely volunteer. And I think also some key staff, you know, from past experience with youth services grants, you know, Brayden having you and others in there is a key part of it, obviously. And I don't know if Scott has any time, or some other key personnel in Public Works who might have some other insights in kind of general feasibility and city impact on some of these projects. So I think committee and some key staff people, and I'd be happy to volunteer. I think the, I agree with the community or neighborhood-wide impact and being located in a CDET-A. I think that makes sense. And for number four, with the permits, I would suggest maybe that they've obtained permits or clearly laid out a plan to obtain permits, just because there might be a project that if not funded, why would they spend the $200 application fee and get a permit and go through all that? But I think having a clearly-defined plan and budget, or whatever necessary steps for permits, might be more reasonable. Thanks.
Any other comments on the review process? Grace?
I just had some other questions that hadn't quite come up yet. And Brayden, I know you were trying to meet with SAC. Just wanted to check that you were able to get some input on this from them.
So I, the presentation materials and the draft documents that you see tonight, I did email to the committee, and I got, I got a couple questions and some feedback from them.
Okay, thanks. And as far as the platform for the application, would this be on like the neighborly one, or is this set up kind of more like a paper application?
So we wouldn't be able to have it on neighborly, but what I would do is turn this document into a fillable PDF that would be easily available on our website, so they'd be able to, you know, just directly input the information, include any attachments, and then I would just ask for them to email those materials to the Grants Division directly.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments? So as far as next steps, Brayden, do you need formal approval of this, or?
No. So my plan would be to make the changes that were suggested tonight, and then, like I said, I would plan to launch it September 1st. That will give us time to do some marketing and outreach so that people are aware. We don't just want to launch it overnight and then no one knows that it's coming. So that would give us a couple weeks to do some, to do some outreach and some marketing for it. And then we would open it September 1st, and then plan to close applications November 1st. And at that time, we would convene the committee to review applications and make funding decisions.
Great. Thank you all for all the work you've put into this. And with no further business before this, actually, if you will indulge me, there was one email that was sent in intending to be done at the council meeting in July. If you don't mind, I'll read it into the record tonight. And this is from Sana Sabawala. Dear Urbana City Council, my name is Sana Sabawala. I'm a resident of Urbana and a member of the Muslim Action Committee. I'm writing to express my support for building a women's shelter in Urbana. The need for such a space is clear, and as a community member, I think creating a safe space for unhoused women is worth the cost. I would love the city to take steps toward creating such a space. Best. And with no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned, and we will move on to the regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting chaired by Chris Evans.